Hi, Joe.
Yes, that's two and.
Yes, I know. On the committee is Councilor Demers and Councilor Toro and myself, Councilor Campbell, as chair.
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's minutes. Approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. First on our list is the appointment of Talia Mok to the Woburn Planning Board. I'm not sure if the mayor would like to speak. Hi, Talia. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee and the council. Pleased to present to you tonight Talia's nomination to the Planning Board. I think some of you know her a little bit. You may have interacted with her. A very active resident, interested citizen, comes with a planning background, tons of experience. We've talked. She's also with the planning team, and I think it will be a great fit. She'll be a great asset to the planning board. While she's available here tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Great. So, welcome. Thank you. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? Because obviously, becoming a member of the planning board is a big decision.
Of course.
You know, some of the other boards are important, but this is very important because it is crucial for the way that we plan our city. So, please, tell us about yourself.
Yep, so I worked in Woburn now for about nine years with my husband. My son is two and a half. You know, I plan on raising my son here, and so I'm invested in the community and care about what happens. And as Mayor Cannon mentioned, I have a background in planning. I work in planning, and so I feel like this is a way for me to give back to my community with the strength that I have.
Yeah. Tell me about, because you have a lot of experience planning, but it talks about your this Article 80. What is that in Boston? Boston Redevelopment Authority Article 80? Seems like you did a lot of work with that.
Yes, that's Boston's local development review process. It's very extensive. In the majority of my career, I've spent guiding clients through that review process.
Okay. And what do they do exactly? So, what? Give us some examples.
So, if we have a project that comes, it's anything over 50,000 square feet, Boston is subject to the development review. They have a whole list of studies that you got to do. So, you know, what we really know is what's required to put a list together of what the clients need to prepare and help guide them through, you know, give them strategic advice of getting through planning, look through all of the studies, see if there's any red flags, and make sure that all of the different consultants they have do everything with a consistent development program. And that's a lot of it. And then, in addition to Boston, we also do the state review, master systems, environmental policies.
Okay. So, as the mayor said, that you met with the team and the planning director.
Yep.
And could you just give us a little overview of the meeting and what you might have talked about?
Yeah, it's a little tent.
Oh, okay.
We just generally met about the position, also talked about my experience. I'm very excited to get a planner and a position.
I know you discussed a little bit about the next steps in terms of the North Woburn Mini Master Plan we're doing to downtown traffic, including the project. And of course, the support that Planning Department offers to the planning board and the city council, how the three entities work cooperatively to advance projects and ensure they're done right.
Okay. Questions from the committee? Yes.
First, a statement. I'm just excited about this appointment. Talia is a constituent of mine. We have had a lot of discussions about prospective developments or projects in Woburn, and I can tell you that I could see the professionalism that she has and the grasp of a lot of planning topics that are being discussed around town. So, I'm excited about her being on the planning board. My only question is, you know, what is your experience in finding creative ways for redevelopment that isn't housing-centric? Because I think over the years, we've been kind of put in a way of redeveloping things, but housing has always been on the top of it. And I know where constant discussions have been going on about these, you know, newer growth initiatives where, you know, it's high-tech or advanced manufacturing or less of an impact on the quality of life, but doing great things in terms of having great jobs, high-paying jobs or something. So, I was just wondering what your thoughts are and whether it could fit in our community.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tough market for anything other than housing right now, but hopefully that will come back. But I think it's really about having the right developers who are willing to work with you and be creative and meet their community's needs and not just the public's. We don't always have a say in developers, of course, but I think the process is really all negotiation and give and take and finding something that works for you.
Thank you.
It's Councilor Toro.
Just a statement too. I've gotten the pleasure of Talia many times. Councilor Fulo and I, I think Talia will be a great member, a great addition to the planning board, in addition to some of the other new members that we've put. I think her experience is fantastic. I think she's a very involved resident of the city. Having someone else on the planning board that has the planning background would be, I think, crucial, especially where Woburn is now in terms of what we're doing. Like Mayor Puck Cannon said, in North Woburn and the downtown traffic area and things like that. So, I think she's going to be a great addition to the planning board.
Want to make a motion to open up?
Second.
Voting members? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councilor DeMambro?
Talia, I truly appreciate your experience, and I think it's desperately needed, especially during these times. We are doing a lot of, I guess you could say, rebirth of the city in many different areas, central square, also North Woburn, along the New Boston Street corridor, as well as Commerce Way corridor of the Woburn Board. And we need people that have experience and can add to, you know, the ideas and what fits and what, you know, doesn't fit. Because we want it, we want these ideas to be smart, and we want to do it the right way. We can't have it a hit and run. We can't have it overburdened with one aspect like housing and not integrate some sort of advanced technologies or businesses to offset the tax base. So, I am looking forward to working with you. And I think you'd be a great addition to the planning board. Thank you. Thank you for the point.
Councilor Marissa Bruin?
I echo all of those thoughts, Talia, and I am excited not just about your background because I'm hoping you can use that background to flip your perspective, right?
Yes.
So, now, you said we can't always choose who comes to the table. We can't, but we very much can choose who we decide to work with and how we decide to move forward. And that will absolutely be within your control at the planning board for the first route through the special permitting process. So, I'm so glad that you'll be there to look at it from our perspective as a resident now, not someone who's trying to help, you know, through the MEPA process and all of that. We have much more control at the local level than some of those state projects you're talking about. And at the other, at the other end of the spectrum is some things that are going on down in Commerce Way, which I still think we need to look at from our perspective and not just what the state says they need, regardless, always, from what we need for our citizens. So, welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Councilor Papalone?
Echo everything everybody has said here. You've got great qualifications. You'll do an outstanding job and look forward to working with you.
President Dillon?
Thank you. Your resume says it all.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Thank you for volunteering to help out our community. You're too big.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to return to the regular.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the appointment of Talia Mok to the Woburn Planning Board be sent out to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
Hey, congratulations.
The council will vote on it in full next week.
Okay. Great. Take care.
Congratulations, Talia. Thank you.
Next, we have the appointment of Thomas J. Quigley to the Woburn Golf and Ski Authority.
Okay.
Hello, welcome.
Evening. Evening, Madam Chair.
Yes, good evening.
Again, I'm pleased to present Tom Quigley to you for appointment to the Woburn Golf and Ski Authority. Again, I think many of you know Tom. He's a resident here in Woburn. He's been instrumental in helping with veterans affairs and veterans issues over the years. Also a civic-minded gentleman, and he's been a member and past president of the Woburn Lions Club, is very active. He's always out there helping others, and I know he has an affinity for the Golf and Ski Authority and the country club, lifelong golfer over there. He met with members of the authority. The chairman is here with us, Mr. Colhane. I know he has Talia's full support for this nomination. I think he brings a lot to the table, and I know he's here and available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
So, even though we just heard from the mayor, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay.
Okay?
Lifelong Woburn resident. Grew up on Wright Street, off of Kilby Street, and born and I'll probably die in this community. The mayor says I've been president of the Lions. I've been commander of the BFW for the last five years. Involved in a lot of veterans' issues and was part of the committee that brought the wall going over there. And I learned to golf at Woburn Country Club. I used to caddy at Woburn Country Club when I was probably 12 years old. And all the big spenders at Woburn would throw you a quarter of 50 cents for carrying their bags at 18, all of a sudden, here you go, kid.
How much do the Winchester people get? Nickel.
Been a member over there for the last 30, 35 years and looking forward to being part of the board over there and seeing what we can do over there.
Thank you. The committee, yes?
Thank you. So, I've known Mr. Quigley for quite some time now. I grew up with his son, Scott. And one thing I can always say is that I've had such great respect for Mr. Quigley because he served our country. He served the Commonwealth as a member of the state police, and he's just always been that person who's involved in the community every different way possible. You see him out at our Memorial Veteran Day services. I think he'd be a great fit on the board, and I look forward to voting to send it out to pass.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, should make a motion?
Make a motion to open up, so non-voting members?
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councilor Marissa Bruin?
I just want to ask a small favor on the behalf of some 20-somethings in Woburn who have become avid golfers. If the Woburn Country Club could do online reservations like the rest of the clubs around? I've heard that a lot from young people. The last person who was here, I think last year that we appointed, I brought this up. I don't think it has changed, but I really hope you can help us with that.
Online reservation?
We've talked about it.
Okay.
It's in the parking shed.
Okay.
We haven't put any financials to it yet.
Okay.
Something to look into, definitely. Probably online, if you don't have to make a deposit or anything, what guarantees them showing up?
Well, most places require a deposit. I can send you some examples of some local clubs that do it. It's not a big investment, and it would bring more young people, I think, more young people who are just starting to golf, and I would think you would want that. But I'm happy to send over information if you like.
Great.
Welcome.
Thank you.
President Dillon?
Thank you. Mr. Quigley's reputation in our community is unmatched. He'll do a great job there. I 110% support this appointment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to return to the regular with this. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it?
I'd like a motion to send out the appointment of Thomas J. Quigley to the Woburn Golf and Ski Authority out to pass. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Tom. Yeah. Great idea. Did you say?
Hi, Talia. Nice to meet you.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Hi, Joe. Anytime. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have to do the ordinance.
Every time, so once you want a date, my best friend, schools be hoping you're in the front yard or something. Thank you. One in at a time.
All right, I've called the order. The Committee on Ordinance Charter and Rules on the committee is Councilor Toro, Councilor Marissa Bruin, Councilor Fulo, Councilor DeMambro, and myself, Councilor Demers as chair. Their motion to dispense with the reading of the previous minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. First of all, the only item on our agenda this evening is CB Silva LLC Proposed Zoning Amendment to amend Section 7.3 and 7.4 to give special permit granting authority for single and two-family dwellings subject to abandonment or not used for a period of two years to the city council. Attorney Tavi, you have the floor.
Good evening. Fortunately, my client could not be here this evening because he was on vacation until this. And I also realize that the memorandum that we provided to you was, you know, right before the Fourth, so everyone may have not had an opportunity to digest it. So, if we need to go to another meeting after tonight, then that's fine with us. So, just to refresh your memory, CB Silva LLC obtained title to this property in March of 2024, and they attempted to obtain a building permit between June and August, and the building commissioner told them that they need to provide evidence that the property was illegally marking forming structural use. They came to me in September, and I worked with them at several meetings with Tom Quinn to review the history of the property along with the entire building file, any records at the Registry of Deeds. And after I completed that review and met with Tom, the only option that was available to build this house or renovate this house, reconstruct the house as a two-family dwelling, was to look at proceeding under Section 29 of the zoning ordinance, which was the significant building of structured ordinance that was adopted back when the Tid Home was being developed. So, we filed a request with the Historical Commission, and after a couple of meetings, they found the property did not meet the criteria. So, at that point, the only option left was to seek an amendment to Section 7.3 and 7.4. So, in the memorandum that I provided, I try to just simplify what this request is, and if I could just run down it quick here. So, the 7.4 section, you know, bars reinstatement of the use after it hasn't been used for two years. That was an option that was given to communities to adopt to put into this zoning ordinance. Absent that, it would be intention to abandon a property, but our ordinance doesn't contain any exception. There's no discretion on behalf of the council to make any other decision. 7.3 only applies to active non-conforming uses and structures, doesn't allow for revival of the use that was deemed abandoned. So, what the proposed amendment seeks to do is that the city council would act as the special permit granting authority solely for any abandoned, non-conforming. It's important to note that this proposed ordinance only refers to residential structures, not commercial structures. Board of Appeals would retain jurisdiction where there's been no lapse in the non-conforming status of the property. So, the property continued to have its non-conforming status, and they needed to go to the Board of Appeals. They have that authority right now for single and two-family properties. They have no jurisdiction above the two-family bar on any commercial property. So, Section 7.4 would allow for the restatement of abandoned or single, two-family structures by special permit in the residential 1 through residential 4 in S1 zoning districts. We have, we have most of our residential homes. Any dimensional variance would still require ZBA action before a special permit could be applied. So, in the memorandum, you know, I had a section called anticipated concerns and responses, you know, all this opened a floodgate to dense development. Our response is no, it only applies to single and two-family homes in residential districts with full current review by this council. Why did the owner realize the two-year rule applied? Well, number one, there was a language issue. This gentleman speaks barely any English, and when he comes to my office, he has interpreted with them. He had no counsel, and he actually took title to this project. He was a contractor during the previous attempt to develop the property. The property owner, you know, Tom Quinn went as far as getting this guy's license revoked, I think, as a builder, ended up not paying our client, who was the contractor, who was doing the construction, and he took title to the property as payment of his work up to date. Just can't the owner tear it down, start fresh. But a lot is undecided. New construction would require a full ZBA review and demolition. And the last question we raised was, is this a workaround to our current zoning? No, it just creates a transparent process for the council to evaluate reasonable proposals. So, you know, in summary again, it only applies to single and two-family homes, only applies to residential districts, and preserves the role of the ZBA to grant dimensional review. Now, you know, are there other properties in the city that fall into this category? Most likely, yes, but, you know, until they come up before the council, there's really no way to identify. So, we also provided to you, you know, a GIS map that showed the property in question. We showed that there was a building permit in 2020 for the construction of a two-family home, and we showed a proposed construction plan. So, that building permit lapsed. Nonconformity was lost, and this is an attempt to allow the property owner to come before this council and ask for a special permit to reconstruct the existing home into a two-family. Let's really hit it in the nutshell.
Councilor Toro?
Attorney Tavi, just to recap, so the current zoning as it stands in regards to 7.3 and 7.4 is if a property, if a non-conforming property remains dormant or inactive for two years or more, it loses its nonconformity, its status. And then, at that point, if you go to redevelop it, you have to bring it up to current zoning regulations. Is that correct?
Correct.
And with this property specifically, it's lapsed, the two years has passed, and what you're basically saying is this property specifically has no way to really bring it back to conforming status as a two-family.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And also as lot size, it doesn't meet the minimum lot size. So, technically, I guess you could tear the property down, then you'd have to go to the Board of Appeals and get variances, which is not all that easy to get.
And in this situation, just again, so I understand that what this would do is this would bypass that process, allowing someone to come in front of us for a special permit to build using the exist. So, just in this case, I know we're looking at just the amendment change at this point, but to get into the property, because I think that's the background to this amendment changes, is the foundation essentially going to stay, and he's just going to tear down the structure and rebuild, keeping the foundation or what? I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, the building permit that was issued would be on the existing foundation.
Gotcha. And obviously, if that, if you were to try to do that without this amendment, you'd have to go into, you'd have to go to the ZBA for variance purposes and things like that. Have you seen this? You've been, you've been in this game for a long time now at this point. Is this the first scenario that you've seen something like this in the, I don't know, I don't want to guess how long you've been doing this now, but I don't want to offend you, actually. But like, is this the first time that you've?
Yeah, this, yeah, this is probably the first time this has come around.
And the last question I have, do you, again, in your professional opinion, do you see this amendment being detrimental in any way to the city if we were to adopt it? Like, be that someone could use this to do something kind of not what we're intending to really use it for, which is, seems to be reasonable, you know what I mean, at face value, but can it be used in some way? Do you feel like that might not be in the best interest of the city?
No, the way we drafted it would only apply to single and two-family homes. Okay, so it wouldn't apply to a three and nonconforming, three-family or nonconforming, five-family, or a nonconforming commercial use.
And we'd still be the special permit granting authority, so if we didn't technically like it, and we can, we don't have to approve it, I guess.
No, I, I don't see any loophole, if you will. Maybe one of the city slurs that take a look at it, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Councilor DeMambro and Councilor Marissa Bruin?
Attorney Tavi, I understand this, and I can appreciate it. I mean, I have some properties up in North Woburn that kind of remind me of 43 Church Street. You know, I can see where this is going, and I support it. And the reason why is because land commodity right now, as we all are aware, is hot. It's a hot commodity, super hot. It's almost more valuable than gold right now. And it hurts me to see abandoned buildings in our city. They bring, they bring no value to any neighborhood, to the city. If anything, it brings, you know, more problems. Slowly but surely, they deteriorate, and then there's more and more problems down the road, including possible fires. So, I like to see, you know, abandoned properties, you know, rebuilt and, you know, renovated in any way, shape, or form, you know? My concern with this, if you were to take on an I-1 and I-2 and you go ahead with something like this, now I have a question in regards to this recent accessory dwelling unit law that just got passed. It's, you know, it's almost like if you pass this, I have this, this concern that right away on top of that, they're going to apply for an ADU. I'd almost like to see some sort of check and balance on that that says if you were to go through this type of process, that takes and nullens voids your ability to go for an ADU. Because I think as the city, we're granting you, you know, the ability to renovate this dwelling that's nonconforming, that's been abandoned. We're giving you a lot of leeway. I would hate to see that they all of a sudden take and build that single or two-family, and then a year later, after they get occupancy, they apply for an ADU on top of that, and now you went from a 1 to a 2 or a 2 to a 3, and then the people are going to go, well, that was a cute move. So, that is something that concerns me, and I would almost like an addendum put to this that says if you go this route, ADU is null and void. And I would rather just see the unit or the property be rebuilt and renovated in accordance, whether it is a single or a double, and that's it. I wouldn't want it to go any further than that. Because I think as the city, as the board, as the ZBA, we've gone above and beyond to allow for that renovation. I would just hate to see, and I know there are contractors out there that would take advantage of this, and I, I would hate to see that. That's, that's my.
No, it's a legitimate concern. I haven't completely digested the ordinance and the law yet on the use.
No, it's still in flux. It's always in flux, that ADU. So, that's what, and I think with the ADU law, there are a lot of crafty people out there that try to conform it and maximize their abilities. And I think in this particular circumstance, and I think 43 Church Street is an eyesore. I think, I think it's, it serves no other purpose but to be renovated in one way, shape, way, shape, form or another, especially for the residents in that neighborhood in the city of Woven. I, I just, I hate seeing abandoned buildings and rundown buildings like that in, in, in any part of the city. So that's my two cents.
Counselor Mr. Brown.
So I thought it was an interesting question that Counselor Toro asked. This was the first time that Joe has seen this or brought this type of ordinance forward. You're, you are great at first time. Many of the things that have happened in the city have been the first time. Joe has led the way in first times, starting with overlays and many other things that, that have been, some of them very good for the city, but it's, it's never just going to be for, for one person, right? There are many eyes on this, I can assure you, besides CB Silver. Not having the ability to know how many people could take advantage of this automatically gives me heartburn and right now, if you asked me to vote for it, I would say no. The other thing I'm also concerned about is what kinds of things are we incentivizing here? Would, would people actually benefit for, for letting these properties get run down and have no ability to do something with it and then, then come here and take advantage of this law? I'm not saying they are, I'm asking that question out loud. So I, I have a lot of concerns about it right up front. I just wanted to express those concerns and without knowing how many people could actually take advantage of this, that is very concerning. That's all I, yeah.
Give you a terms for your hat.
Yeah, please do.
The, this only applies to single and two family property. So I guess if someone's going to take advantage of it, I don't know what they would be taking this single and we doing it as a single or two and we doing it as a two. So they can't go any higher, they can't turn it into commercial. So, so I say it may be, you know, worth it for the city solicitor to take a look at.
Oh, I think we were going to make that motion if we haven't already done that, but I will make it in the form of a motion to get an opinion from city solicitors, the body.
The motion is to get an opinion from city solicitors, Salvati relative to the legality and the impacts of the proposed ordinance change. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Counselor Mr. Brown, you still have the floor?
I, again, I'm, I look forward to seeing what Attorney Salvati has to say, but there's still something about this that really is bothering me, Joe. Maybe by the time we get to city council, I'll get under the covers more on it. I'm going to take a look at the planning board's recommendation, although I haven't always been on board with their current recommendations, but I'm going to read it and go, and go from there.
Thank you. Anybody else on the ordinance committee wish to opine?
Make a motion to open up the non-voter number?
Aye.
Motion made in second to suspend the rules to allow non-voting members to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor, President Dillon, excuse me.
Thank you, sir. I don't know how far, but a number of years back in the one sixty number area of Burlington Street, there was a two family that sat very dilapidated vacant for many years and it went up for foreclosure and this particular law, statute, was in effect. And some of the people that I attended the foreclosure and some of the people didn't know it and it quickly got around that it no longer was a two family by right because it was over three years abandoned. Since that time that happened, the person who purchased it at foreclosure did go to the Board of Appeals and they did not, if my memory serves me correct, get the permit and they ended up knocking it down, building a beautiful single family.
That's nice.
Now, that all aside, it, it happens, it happened then, this was probably four, five years ago. What, of course, the concern is that we're not changing something that's been on the books for years by all means has worked based on somebody's business decision. I don't know how else to say it. I'll ask Attorney Toby, is it fair to ask how much he was owed by the homeowner that gave him the home and blew up the payment?
Yeah, I don't know if I, it would be listed.
Approximately?
Listed in the deed, so. That wouldn't give, that wouldn't give the entire amount, but the consideration on the deed, which is a public document, is $365,000.
So it appears that this fellow who owns it or the person who owns it now did $265,000, $365,000 worth of work and the, the owner couldn't pay him, so he gave him the.
Least item, the least item of that.
Okay. Again, we need more apartments, we need more homes, that's well, well known. The other side of the coin is we want to make sure that we have responsible landlords and quality homes for these folks to go into. So this all ties into it. I think what will probably make my decision is how the council or the ward feels about it and its constituents. I'd like to hear more about that and then I'll, I'll base my opinion on that. Thank you.
That's a pretty good segue into what I have to say.
We didn't rehearse it.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate where all my colleagues are coming from because to an effect, it's, this is a selfish moment for me because this is a blighted, troubled property in my ward that since I've been on this council and Counselor Anderson before me, it's been an issue. We've been trying to find ways. There's been multiple ideas that have floated around before my time on the council. I was very optimistic of the previous property and then he fell into arrears and then was being fined by Commissioner Quinn, even brought to court, lost his license to practice contracting in Massachusetts over this due to failure to appear and failure to pay fines. The gentleman in question, who now owns it, along with the transfer of the property, also recouped his legal fees in pursuit of the, the financing that was, that was not covered. So I do sympathize with this gentleman and I also look at it as more of an opportunity than a challenge. I am in favor of the legal opinion from Attorney Salvati because, you know, and I, I, I don't want to criticize the planning board, but this recommendation, I want to say, where's the beef? It's very light on the specifics and it makes mention that the said language is provided for in strict accordance with state statutes for said non-conforming and abandoned uses. That doesn't do anything for me. I want to know what the state statutes are. I want to know whether we're hands or.
And none of those have been cited?
None of those have been cited. So whether, whether that, I, I would rather be, let me know why you're denying this, not because, because we're in a community right now where I, we tried to get a ZORC committee off the ground and we couldn't even agree to the makeup of that board if we were to create it. And it's this committee's responsibility to be looking at, along with the planning board, to be looking at our zoning ordinances to see how we can modernize some of these so we move away from it. It's always been done that way, or business as usual approach. So I think the, one of the reasons why I'm very willing to have this discussion move forward, I'll have as many meetings as possible until we come to a decision, is I think we need to look at this because there are blighted properties in all of our wards that may benefit from this. At the very least, we should be looking at a way where we trigger or allow us the capability to grant an extension. If this property owner had found out and he only had three weeks, maybe he could have filed for an extension so that we could extend that non-conformity. Right now, we don't have that ability within our ordinances. There's no tools to make an adjustment if this gentleman was going to provide plans to actually do something nice. And if he didn't have the time to get it in, we're now going to say, oh, you're now in the hole, what you lost. You've gained this albatross of a property, but now we want you to knock it down and build a one family instead of a two family. No one would do it. They'd let it sit vacant until interest rates dropped and they could borrow more money to make it the one family and sell it and barely make a profit. Because you're not, you're, you're not going to make money knocking down a structure, building up a, a single family, getting the variances that they most likely need to build the single family on the plot because the, the site is non-conforming already. And to Counselor DeMarrow's point, if you could, Attorney Toby, if we could get a plot plan for forty-three, forty-five church, just so we can see whether they would actually have the square footage allowable for the ADUs, because I don't know if we could outright restrict the ADUs because that's done by right now, but I think we may be able to limit based on the size or square footage of the plot, what could then come forward. That might be something we can ask Counselor, excuse me, City Solicitor Salvati.
Are up to.
Correct, but you need to be able to fit that on the plot, on the lot. And if it doesn't have enough square footage to fit the ADU, it would basically not qualify for an ADU. So if it's a non-conforming site that would require variances, it might already be there.
Well, my thing was, Jim, that you might be able to do it within the dwelling, in the basement, in the attic. Or just maybe blow out a wall 10 feet where you have enough, because under the ADU, they have shrunk down what you need for setbacks. So my thing is this, you could, and, and I'm, I'm almost starting to see this now and I've been starting to hear the language when I'm communicating to certain contractors. They're already preemptively laying out foundations and this and that and framing so that they're already anticipating.
Basically making modular versions.
They're already kind of conforming it in, within the, the new structure that they're building. And, and I can tell that in the very near future, after occupancy, they'll be able to set up or they pitch the property and the, and the house, the structure already set up for an ADU. All you have to do is just finish it off. But there is enough ample room, that's why it was a concern of mine. If, if you could do, especially with forty-three Church Street being at such a large structure, it wouldn't be very hard to take.
Right.
Very one of those.
Agreed. I understand that angle now. If there would be no objections from the committee, would it be fair to ask the members of the council, if they have specifically targeted questions for Attorney Salvati, to submit those to the clerk by the end of the week so we can get that letter off to Commissioner Salvati, so, Commissioner Salvati, City Solicitor Salvati? And I'll also ask that that be CC to council, to Commissioner Quinn. Too many titles today. No, but I think, I think getting those questions and specifics in front of Attorney Salvati would be effective in terms of everybody's concerns and everybody's concerns being specifically addressed, rather than just whether this council has the legal right to change the ordinance or not. I think that would be beneficial to the council.
If I could just.
Yes, sir.
I also want to just bring out that I've also noticed in, in my ward, when structures aren't being used, not only do they dilapitate, but they end up turning into little hotels for little creatures. And I, as well with overgrowth and shrubage and everything else that just encapsulates the property, it just contributes to the ongoing problem that we already have within this city. You know, a, a beautified property, a renovated property and maintained property keeps the critters away. Abandoned properties only exacerbate that.
And I think, I think one of the main, I mean, this is good for one site, but looking broadly across the city, if it were not to be utilized in a nefarious way, this could be beneficial where we have properties that may have already lapsed, that have sat there in disrepair for quite some time. So whether it's a way where they can come in a petition for an extension or whether we go forward with this where they have the right to come before us and ask us, we are, and, and the way it's written, we have the ability to deny it based on the non-conforming section of our current Woven zoning ordinances. So I just ask everybody to keep an open mind, you know, I'm, I'm not in a rush personally on this, it's just, I want to get it right and give everybody the opportunity to have the information and make their own decision. But I think as much as we want to be cautious and make sure that nobody will take advantage of this, we also want to make sure that we don't want to discount what benefits we might have for certain properties in our, in our constituencies that might have been a blight for quite some time that could actually incentivize, you know, a hardworking property owner to make an investment and, and turn a blight into, into a good site. So just my thoughts.
The value of.
Yep. And the neighborhood values rise up and the community's quality of life goes up as well. Counselor Mr. Brown?
I, I agree a hundred percent. And, you know, maybe the problem is I've seen too many people who try to do exactly the opposite of what you're just saying, right? I, I, one that comes to mind, it's still fresh in my mind, a property that was on Orange Street while you were not living too far from there. And I'll never forget the guy coming to me saying, hey, I know it's rundown, it's a mess, well, let me make it into a two family and I'll clean it up. The answer was, yeah, no, clean it up. So, so that's the kind of stuff I'm hoping.
Right.
We don't, that's the stuff I'm worried about because people like that still exist. There's a lot of them, right?
Sure. I think it's just right now on the current market as is, on a non-conformity, non-conforming site, which would require setback or relief of variance relief, having somebody have a structure, two family, bringing it down to a one family after redoing the whole thing, does not, nobody wants to do that right now due to the market we're in and due to the interest rates being so high that an honest to goodness person in the city wouldn't be able to pull that off.
Right. But again, for every action we take, there is a reaction. And what I'm waiting to see from Attorney Salvati is a lot of detail on how many properties currently exist that could take advantage of this. I, I need to know that.
It's too bad that we do not have our, I mean, they are electronic per se, but not in a database, that we could look up who has filed with us under seven point three for non-conformities to like pull that information up. Unfortunately, it's, a lot of that's archaic records that have not been digitized yet.
And I, I hear what you're saying. I, I, I agree to some extent, but I also listen to my constituency and my constituency is very tired of seeing two, three, four bedroom apartment buildings, all of it. And the question always to me is, Rowan, where are the single family homes? So I, I mean, I answer to them. So again, this is, this is why we're having this conversation. I'll try very hard to keep an open mind.
Counselor Campbell.
Very much liked what you said, Counselor DeMerris, about the extension. I agree a lot with like what you had said. Also, the two-year deadline is, is important. I mean, there's a reason that that is there. I think that pushes people to make sure that their property is going to stay tidy and neat. So maybe doing the extension route is the way to go and to look into doing something like that. I didn't even think of that.
Good idea.
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea.
Any other members of the council? Is there a motion to return to regular business?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So the recommendation, recommendation of the chair would be to leave this in committee. Hopefully we'll get some feedback from City Solicitor Salvati and be back here at a future date to deliberate his findings.
Do, do we want to give Attorney Salvati a, a date in which to get back to us by?
I do not, we, we do not have the next committee meeting scheduled by, but that's a good segue into a scheduling because outside of this particular issue, well, I'm looking to schedule another meeting as soon as we can of the Committee on Ordinance due to the fact that our deputy superintendent for the DPW has issued his resignation. So we will have to go back to the drawing board, which means starting over with the ordinance for the DPW Assistant Superintendent. So I'd like to speak with the members of the committee in terms of scheduling a date forthwith between now and the fifteenth, or, or between now and our August meeting so that we can get that heard and up and queued up front.
Twenty-second.
And so twenty-second work for clerk.
Of July.
Clerk Vincent, I'd like to have your feedback as well to see if you have any vacations planned or, no? Okay, I just don't want to make sure we're inconvenienced.
When is our next committee meeting? City Council in full?
August fifth.
Fifth, August fifth?
Is that the formal, the formal date for?
August fifth, I think is the date in which we have our next.
August ninth, wouldn't it be August nineteenth for our full meeting? We're only having, we're only having one August meeting.
Oh, so we do, we're doing August fifth.
Okay, nineteenth?
Yeah.
The twenty-second, that?
Yeah, does the twenty-second work for the members of the, of the committee?
Rob, is that good news?
July twenty-second.
July twenty-second. Yes. That works for everybody on ordinance?
What time? Six o'clock, work?
That's for me. Okay.
So Monday, it's Monday night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I give one.
Twenty-second, July?
July twenty-seventh.
Okay. I want like Tuesday because Mondays are all of the.
I got you. So we'll do June twenty-second.
Yeah, I'm not here Monday.
Six P M.
July.
The, I'm sorry, July twenty-second. The primary objective of that meeting will be to meet, to discuss the. The primary objective of that meeting will be to meet, to discuss the, I think it's the municipal code, relative to the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works.
Okay. When did that happen?
Recently. Probably two, two weeks ago.
Yeah, I didn't say it.
That being said, there was a, there was question about a deadline, I mean, we could, could we have that the Monday before the August meeting?
Even, well, sorry.
Before that?
I was gonna say, even like by the 17th would give everybody plenty of time to, you know, if the solicitors.
17th of?
Of July, if we got it by the 17th, that gives us, you know, a few days to read it.
We don't, we don't know what Solicitor Salvati's vacation schedule is, so I would caution that that might be too quick. Maybe, maybe we'll get it by the 22nd. And why don't, why don't we say a response by the, when would we have to have that? Would it be the 17th we'd have to have that on the agenda? Let's not, we'll push that off to the subsequent meeting of ordinance after that, just focus the 22nd on DPW. So why don't we say we'd like a response before July 28th, Monday, July 28th.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
So if Clerk Vincent, if you could add that request to the letter, that'd be great. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We got adjourned at 6:23. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Committee on Special Permits. Was it on? Wasn't it on when we came in?
It was too loud.
Gordon's having trouble hearing.
He's trying to make us move snappy tonight.
Not at all.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I can open this window, but we'd be exposed to one.
That would even be worse, I think that's gonna be worse. Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the Committee on Special Permits to order, Chair, City Counselor Marsha Bruin, we also have Counsel Campbell, Counsel Viola, Counsel DeMambrano, and Counsel Demers on the committee. We have a couple of items on our schedule tonight, the first is for, yes, make a motion.
Motion to dispense with the reading.
22nd, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Counsel Demers. First on our agenda is Anon Patel for special permit under WZO Section 5.129 and Section 8225, the modification of previously issued special permits to allow for the replacement of Bob's Discount Furniture with a supermarket, the use of 980 square feet dining grab-and-go area with a kitchen, and reduction of parking from 302 to 296, and an amended site plan of record at 112 Commerce Way. Attorney Tarby, you have the floor.
Yes. All my clients are sitting behind you, Chair.
Hello.
Delacav, Alan Major, and Scott Dorn.
Come on up.
And I have some associates. So I just wanted to clarify one thing.
Pull up the chair.
Joe, let's have them pull up the chair.
Thank you. Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
What I'd like to do is submit a copy of the floor plan that Counselor Marsha Bruin requested at the public hearing.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I just want to make sure we capture the date that's on here, please. There's no date on it, so?
No. September 2024. Last.
We didn't have, we had a person a second, but no.
So, I'd like, I'd like a motion to reflect that we're accepting the.
Make a motion to the plan of record, be as indicated on the plan of September 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Attorney Tarby.
Okay, so yes, the last revision date is November, November 21st, 2024. Okay, so at the last public hearing, Counsel Marsha Bruin had requested information on the size of the grab-and-go area. So the grab-and-go area consists of 904 square feet, which consists of the dining area with 32 seats, shown in yellow, the rotisserie area shown in orange at 403 square feet, and then in addition, kitchen prep area, that's not open to the public, that's where food gets prepared. So that's out of the plan. And on, and on the parking, do have a revised site plan, Nick, do you have that planned? Do you want to submit that?
Make a motion or see this as made part of a permanent record?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. There'll be 10 copies there. Need to get some road to you? Yeah.
Okay, so at the conclusion of the public hearing, following, bless me, one, the car corral included in the parking space count. No, no, it's not. Two, and I'm gonna have Nick just go over the revised site plan in a second, so some of these questions will be answered, as well as some of the questions. How many additional ADA spaces are required? Three. What's the condition of the existing pavement, striping in the parking lot? Four. What is the cause of the delay at the shopping center intersection? Five, what are the Chipotle traffic counts on Sundays? And six, how many delays traveling through the shopping center intersection on Commerce Way? Bring lunch hour of seven. What is the required indication? Eight, the floor plan should be grab-and-go area. So Nick, I think it probably makes sense for you to just redo the revisions that were made in itself.
Is there any? No, I don't think so.
You can take mine.
I'll use my computer. So there's been, we haven't made any physical changes to the site plan itself, all the changes are kind of focused on the parking table. Again, there's no hard state changes proposed, so all the existing zoning dimensional requirements are gonna remain unchanging from the proposed condition. The majority of the work is internal to the building itself. We are adding a grease trap to support the grab-and-go use, as well as the car corral will occupy one parking space, and that, again, that's not included in the parking count that we're showing. So we did review the updated floor plan, updated the net four areas for the fast food use, as well as the retail space. In total, the new required parking is 298 spaces. Previously, we had made some assumptions and calculated as 302. Required number is 298, the proposed is 296. Based on the 296 spaces provided, that requires seven ADA spaces. There are 11 existing spaces out there on the property, so we do meet that minimum requirement. The reason we were short previously is because our parking table was incorrected, it calculated the ADA count per use, which ultimately results in a larger number. What's typical, though, is to use the total number of parking spaces provided on a single lot, which, again, in this case, is 296, that requires seven total ADA spaces that are evenly distributed across each of the uses. And again, there are 11 out there today existing, four which are in front of the supermarket, there are five in front of PetSmart, and there are two in front of it. Any questions with that on the site plan, updates in the parking?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
I was there the other day, and I noticed no parking signs for, I think it was pay tile. They were on the far left side, adjacent to Emblem 120, there were all no parking signs for, it's for pay tile only, all others will be towed, the sign's going all the way down. When I was there, knowing that, obviously Bob's isn't there anymore, there was still approximately about 15 to 20 cars scattered in that area. I don't know if that's overflow from Emblem 120, but those no parking signs for a particular customer. I didn't know who the name was, why it was there, if it was part of Emblem 120, but that concerned me, because I did the loop around the building, noticed that there's parking around the back, which you have illustrated along the side of the building, so on and so forth, but that concerned me, that run all the way to.
All those compact spaces along the side there.
Pay to do.
Yeah, those signs, I don't know whose signs those are, but they're already up, and it concerned me, because it was all the way down, like I said, if you're facing the building on the right-hand side, all the way down the side, adjacent to emblem. So that, I don't know if those signs were preemptively put there, who put those there, who they are, but.
I honestly, I couldn't say, I don't know if you're familiar with the signs and.
So I think the landlord put that sign up temporarily, because of the apartment people, they were parking on the lot, and in the snow and all, it was creating issue for him.
The apartment.
The apartment.
Parking.
And I believe they still aren't parking.
Yeah.
15 vehicles still parking adjacent in front of that storefront. I just wanted to make sure that.
The landlord put up the sign for.
They were having a hard time in the maritime for snow clearance.
Snow.
Car moving in the nighttime.
But, so you saw cars parked there? No snow?
No snow, Monday. That was the 10 AM.
Okay. So that's a bit of a concern.
Yeah, those are cars from the resident building.
Right, understand, but when your supermarket fills up, and you need those 15 or 20 spaces.
We're gonna be monitoring it much more closely when you have people on site, as to the towing and the warnings and all that. Right now, there's nobody in the building, so it's hard to really police it.
Understand.
Basically. Once there's presence in the building, it's a different, different, different.
I'm just hoping they don't blend like they do Bullardron parking lot we have up here in the center. There's a lot of vehicles up there that don't belong up there, and people basically park there, and nobody knows where they're from, who's they are, and they're up there forever.
You guys aren't charging them to park there currently, are you?
No.
Okay, so you're not renting them space?
No, they don't own the building.
Oh, okay. You want to say? Go ahead.
Okay, and then I think the other question came up about the condition of the pavement. Our office is actually right next door, so we took a walk over. It's our, my professional opinion that the pavement's in good to fair condition, there's no visible signs of structural failures, there's no potholes or large patches, there is crack sealant throughout.
Lots of it.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
We see that as like a maintenance measure, and it's, it's good, because if you don't fill the crack, then it fills with water, expands and freezes, and then you get the real big structural failures in the pavement. So it's more of a maintenance item that we see as a good thing, that they are actually doing the maintenance and keeping up with those cracks. The striping, it's visible, you know, it's aged, but it's clearly visible, there's no, it's not difficult to see where the parking spaces are. So again, in our opinion, we don't think there's any other maintenance items that would need to be done in order for this use to take place, and just continued monitoring of those cracks and making sure that those are continued to kept up.
Is there anybody else that has questions before I, I'll defer to anybody, because I'm the chair?
Just one, 59 question for the chair. Maybe we'll look at that, if there's existing use as a special permit for the original, the property owner, that may have had provisions in it, that would have them keep that up to more of your satisfaction?
I definitely will go back and revisit that, because.
I would hate to put that on the petition, and it's the landlord's responsibility, and if there's a condition and an underlying special permit.
For the existing permit, I'll take a look at that. Thank you for making that recommendation, because I think the parking lot looks terrible. I think the striping is worn. They could use a seal coat, for sure.
Definitely.
For sure.
I have photos, just like to submit. I don't see this being any different. Parking lots, we see.
I'm not talking about any other parking lot, except for this parking lot. That's what's in front of me tonight, and I don't have to see it, I went down there. But I will look into the other permit, for sure. And the striping, has anybody else been down there? You've been, yeah, okay. Okay, you have the floor, sir.
I think it's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Of course, of course.
Then there was some open traffic question you described.
It should be five copies, which size are given total?
Motion will accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The, Scott, Vanessa, Tracy, at the last meeting, Counsel Viola asked for some information related to the Sunday trip generation for supermarket, and also for trips for the Chipotle. We did not have, we did counts of the driveways, but we didn't parse out the Chipotle data from what we counted. So I estimated those trips using the ITE Trip Generation Manual, similar to how we estimated trips for the supermarket. And I think that, you know, the Sunday traffic is noticeable, it's pretty close to the Saturday, both on a daily basis and on the midday peak hour. I think in terms of the traffic flow, Jason Street traffic flow, typically Sundays are less, as a lower volume day than Sunday, it's usually, than Saturday, it's usually one of the lower volume days. Couldn't find any, any counts along Commerce Way, but that's, that's been my experience. That's why, you know, the trip generation is focused for retail uses, specifically Saturday, midday time periods, weekday evening time periods, because they're acknowledged to be the higher volume conditions. And then, I think that was really, you know, the, Joe, I don't know if you wanna, maybe get into the mitigation discussion, or?
Let me just look at my list, and we covered everything.
Yeah, we did, we did say, but Frank, question. Scott, just out of curiosity, how often is the ITE Trip Generation Manual updated?
It's usually, it's usually about every five years or so.
Five years?
Yeah. And it's actually due for an update, I think maybe later this year. So this data is from the 2021.
2025.
11th edition, 2021, please.
What I'd like to do is, I have some proposed conditions for discussion purposes, I will also fill in some of the answers that were raised.
Make a motion that we were attempting to use and make them part of a working draft.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like, I'd like to just put this proposal in, which I hear, but the supermarket here is just under 22,000 square feet, typical market basket is 75,000 square feet. The grab-and-go area is approximately 1695 square feet, the average of the size of one is over 2,000 square feet, so this one is actually smaller. So the list of working conditions include the following. One, there's a condition, the standard condition, one that references the site plan of record. Two, the hours of operation of the grab-and-go be 9 AM to 9 PM, as are the operating hours. Grease trap maintained and inspected as required under the State Plumbing Code. Four, grab-and-go area shall be limited to approximately 1,695 square feet. Five, limited to 32 seats, no outside seating is allowed. Six, requires adequate road control to be in place prior to commencement of any work and maintain through the construction phase, with monthly reports to the Board of Health and Department of Inspection Services. and maintain through the construction phase with monthly reports to the board of health and department inspection services. Seven, addresses the handicap parking spaces meeting all local, state, and federal handicap code requirements. Four, parking lot maintenance four times per day to ensure the lot is kept clean with plastic bags and trash. Nine, requires snowy wall plan. Ten, incorporates the, um, woman zoning ordinance and municipal code as to, um, the dumpster enclosures. And then on, on eleven, if you, if you recall at the, um, at the public camp, um, memorandum from the, um, city engineer was accepted and um, I can't recall who, but some made a comment saying, you know, I know that the city engineer's office has requested, although I will discuss this, you know, further, further in committee. And, um, so when you look at the, the mitigation that they've, they've proposed on the second page of the, um, of the engineer memorandum, there were four, four bullet points. Um, one is to install a no, no traffic video detection system. Costs twenty-eight thousand, the other is to install a peak controller with iCloud function. The cost of the equipment is forty-five hundred. Third bullet point, installation of equipment by mass DOT traffic, signal contract estimated costs twenty thousand. And then the fourth bullet, Vanessa would, uh, publish details, bringing up the, um, total cost to, to be fifty, fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, we also added a, um, another mitigation try to, that we would install a dual net design at the Chipotle drive. So, um, we had a call, Scott, I mean, I had a call late this afternoon with, um, city engineer to discuss the mitigation and, um, what we did, and, you know, I know it's Scott getting to the technical part of it unless you think I've adequately covered it. Um, that the, um, the video, the no traffic, um, video detection system, um, we thought was, um, not a request that should be part of the mitigation, and the reason being is that the only level of service that changes as a result of this project is on Saturday, is it peak hour or?
Saturday midday peak hour at this intersection.
Goes from a B to a C, all other levels of service remain the same. So we, we, um, suggested to, to Alex that, um, we didn't think that this, this was something the developer should, um, pay for and install. And, you know, you can, you know, check with him independently, but what he said to, to Scott and I was that we can inform the council. It's up to them to decide what they want to do with the mitigation, he's made a recommendation that if you decide that this is not appropriate, um, for the developer, then he's not going to, you know, tell you that's the wrong thing to do. Right, that's what?
So do you want to add anything?
Yeah, um, you know, in terms of the impact of this project at this intersection, during the evening, on an overall basis, it's two point seven seconds of delay. And as Joe mentioned, it's level of service C, which is, which is pretty good, right? That's, that's better than average. Uh, on the Saturday midday time period, the overall increase is one point, one point two seconds. So, so there, the operations there are pretty good. So the, the requests seem to be, uh, to replace equipment that may already be at the end of its, of its service life, that's already due for replacement. So, you know, given that the, that the operations are, are decent, are in, are, you know, again, better than average, that are, that are good. Um, and the fact that, um, that the, you know, there's some, some of these requests are, they seem to be looking for, uh, for, um, for a way to optimize operations here, um, you know, to allow the city to, to make, um, modifications sort of on the fly that may not be necessary here. If it's, if it's a level of service D or a level service E or a level service F, where the queues are extending out for, you know, for so many or for such a long distance that the cars can't get through the intersection, then I think that's one thing. Um, but, you know, I, I was out there on Monday as well, councillor. Um, I noticed that there's a pretty well-defined peak, starts about noon and stops by about ten oh one. Um, all those cars that were through, going through that intersection seemed to get through on one cycle. Was out there, that was Monday, Tuesday I was out there in the early mor, or the mid-morning, pre-lunch. Hardly any traffic, I was there this afternoon. There's more traffic obviously on Commerce Way headed north to get up to ninety-three. Um, but in general, the operations seem to match what we observed and what we counted. So, and I think that the, you know, from our perspective, it seems like, like doing some of the mitigation is, is reasonable, is fair, I don't know about doing it all.
All set?
Total mitigation, the proposal would total twenty-six thousand dollars. Now I need to point out eleven is a typo to, um, plus two sixteen, the Boston Street should say lunch while Commerce Way.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, before I turn it over to my fellow councillors, do you know what date it is today?
No.
What's today's date?
It's the ninth.
Of July?
Yes.
And the day you went out was yesterday?
Monday and Tuesday.
And anytime you would have gone out last week, you probably wouldn't have seen a lot of traffic.
Oh, right.
And you're probably not going to see a lot of traffic for the next three weeks because it's July. At the end of the day, to say, to say to this council, well, to go from a B to a C isn't that terrible? It doesn't take long to go from a B to an F if we don't take care of these things when they're in front of us. I'm, I'm going to defer to the rest of the council because I'm the chairman, so I'll finish the rest of my comments at the end. I think councillor DeMambro, you had some questions.
Thanks, Angela. So when I was out there Monday, I will say this, what concerned me was exiting out of the Chipotle exit. Even though it's, you know, bear right, it, it was a bear to get out on to Commerce Way because they're, they're coming off of the Commerce Way off ramp of ninety-three. And, and if that intersection is green, they're hawking it down that street, there's no way, and it's almost really hard to judge. Wow, I drive a full-size pickup and I'm sitting there and I'm up and I'm looking. And it was amazing to judge when they come, they start making the left off the highway. It doesn't take but a snap of a finger and they're in front of you, that's how fast they're going, whether to beat the light or not. It's a concern that it goes from somewhere in the vicinity of what once was way back when when Bob's was there and they had minimal traffic, maybe forty cars a day, to two thousand nine hundred and forty-four prospective customers. If they should take and say, we're not waiting in that line over at the stop traffic light, we're going to utilize the Chipotle bear right out onto that road. That's a big concern of mine because you got to be on your game. And also what I noticed was people that are in the far-left lane on Commerce were starting to bear right trying to get in the first lane from the second lane. So you not only have the loop, it was almost kind of like, resembled a NASCAR, they're coming off the ramp and they're whipping and they're cutting in front of each other for whatever, whether they're going to PetSmart or they're trying to get into the industrial park, just beyond that. Um, and during the week, that's going to be an issue because there are to Chairman Morrison Bruins Point, there's a lot of traffic. Once it's robust down there, when everybody's back to school and colleges and everybody's back to work and the workforce is full throttle down in that area, it's a busy area. And that was what I witnessed just on Monday into Chairman Morrison Bruins Point. It was Monday right after Fourth of July weekend, which I wasn't getting the full thrust of all of the traffic down there at, again, like I said, ten, ten fifteen in the morning. So that's a big concern of mine, that, that, that right at Chipotle. I have no doubt people would try to make that hard right into there, and that's good that you put a do not enter sign there. Um, but my concern is the exiting uh, of traffic coming out of that prospective marketplace on to Commerce when those lights. I don't know how to communicate those two lights at the intersection at Commerce, Presidential, and the on and off ramp and that intersection where Target and Pet, PetSmart is, but something needs, they, those, those lights need to communicate. Because when one's on and the other one's stopped, it, it's a bear, and if you keep them going at the same time, it's even worse. So I don't know what the answer is, all I know is I can see serious problem. Thank you.
Councillor DeMars?
Yeah, so Attorney Harvey, in your discussions with City Engineer Zicky, it was his decision that if the petitioner were only going to meet us at the, I believe you said twenty-six thousand?
Be the, um, one of our listed conditions would be A, B, C, D.
Or was, was it considered his priority as well, those three, rather than the no-traffic video detection system?
Um, no, I think he, they were providing guidance to the council and leaving it up to the council.
So is that me, I'd be interested to see which one of these items here of mitigation are we going to get the most bang for our buck with regards to traffic considerations?
I would have been interested in participating in that meeting.
Because if we're looking at, if we're looking at,
I did not.
You know, maybe we go with the twenty-eight, with the no-traffic video detection system as opposed to everything else. If that's better used for that site, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'll make that in the form of a motion that we get some clarity from, uh?
I'll be meeting with the city engineer.
You're going to be meeting with the city engineer, just to get clarity because I think if, if the number one option here to install a new no-traffic video detection system, if we get more out of that than the other three items, I don't see why we're agreeing to, we'll be agreeing to the other three items in lieu of, you know?
I'll meet with Alex to try to get a better understanding of what actually happened um, and share our, my concerns as well.
If, if I could just follow up on that point, the, um, my understanding is that the, the note, the no-traffic controller system, uh, would require
The upgrade on the signalization?
The upgrade on the, the peak traffic control.
Okay.
Uh, but the peak traffic controller does not require the no, the no-traffic device.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions? Councillor Toro?
He gets to open it up, right? Comment motion to open it up to not voting.
Second.
On favor, aye. Councillor Toro, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Scott. I think, so there was a reference to during peak hours, maybe weekend peak hours having a net increase in delay by like maybe two point four seconds or something like that, what was that?
Yeah, one, one point.
There was one, it was like two, over two seconds, one that was one, like, what were those, can you um, clarify those timeframes and what was the focus?
Sure, so the weekday evening at this intersection overall was a, the overall delay increase is two point seven.
Okay.
And during the Saturday midday time period, the overall increase is one point two.
Okay, because I'm look, I'm just looking at the original PowerPoint and then just even some of the data from the city engineer. So, the existing furniture store at the weekday evening entering and exiting is fourteen total, and the supermarket would be two thirty-four, and I think we said that would, so you're saying that increase, that net change of two hundred and twenty would only increase things by two seconds throughout that timeframe?
Yep.
And then the weekday daily, first Saturday daily, the existing furniture store for weekday daily is one sixty-four compared to the proposed supermarket at twenty-four, twenty-four fifty, so it's a net change of two, two, two thousand two hundred and eighty-six people coming in and then on those Saturdays, twenty-seven fifty-eight. I, I, again, I'm not the, the traffic expert, but it just to, I don't see how we can only see an increase in traffic by two seconds and one second with such a large increase in volume in that area.
Yep.
You know, though, being someone that frequents Chipotle pretty often. You know, not so much Bob's when it was there, but, um, I, like, Chipotle is a tiny little kind of area, just that parking lot over there stinks, you know, for, for that parking, but I don't know, and I like the big parking lot for what was Bob's or what, what could be the supermarket, plus what is that, PetSmart there or something? I, I just, I, I don't see, and again, I don't see how it's only a two-second change or one-second change and it only goes from a, a B to a C with such a large increase in proposed volume in that area. Um, I need to see more and I'd, I'd be interested to hear from Alex, from city engineer, a little bit more in regards to that specifically, see if he technically agrees, because reading his original memorandum to us, he, he made it a very, he made it a big point to kind of address increase in volume in his actual, uh, memo to us, which, you know, it's, it's relative, I think it's at least two paragraphs, which generally speaking have that much information in a memo to us, I, I feel like that's a concern of his and, um, you know, I'm, I think the mitigation is a necessity, but I'll defer to the other councillors, but that's my big concern.
And just to add, just one more thing, being you're going to have prepared meals at this site in this location, adjacent in, 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 definitely in, in the center of an industrial park. Yes, Indian food is extremely popular and a lot of people are going to go there for lunch and they're going to, time is of the essence. So again, that is a concern of mine, taking these shortcuts, whipping out onto the street, maybe taking a cattle, you know, dot out into traffic because time is of the essence, I only got thirty minutes. It is a concern of mine, um, with that whole area down there with the lights and everything, I think needs to be more focused upon.
Anybody else? Attorney Harvey?
I just want Scott to clarify the level of service change, because I don't believe it has anything to do with what you have observed the last few days.
It's July, I'll point out again, it's the week of July fourth, the week of July eighth. If we take, maybe we should wait until, see what those numbers look like in September, right? What, what they would really look like.
I know, what my point is, is that the level of service that you talked about is in the original traffic spec, has nothing to do with what he observed the last few days.
Right, and we did those counts in March. So, um, so my only point was that, um, you know, and, and I absolutely, that's, you know, I, I'm aware that it was a holiday week, so I wasn't going to go down there last week. Um, but I was able to get down there, uh, this week and I understand that it's, it's, it's summertime and not as many people are around. Um, but, but the, you know, the level of service that we calculated was based on volumes that were collected in March, when schools were in session and, uh, activity was, was pretty normal. In terms of, um, the operations in traffic that wants to exit from, uh, from the parking lot, you know, they can, um, I, I saw, you know, a few cars coming out, that, that right out, that unsignalized drive, I saw a lot of cars using the signal to get out. And they're just, they're there waiting until they get a green.
It's almost like that's the only way to get out.
And, and it seemed to work pretty well.
Providing you're patient.
In, uh, and councillor Toro, in, in terms of the delays, um, the, the signal, this signal operates on a ninety-second cycle. So that's about forty cycles an hour. If we have two hundred and twenty trips both entering and exiting, that's about five or six cars a cycle, both entering and exiting. It's one to two cars in, in a right turn going in, the left turn going in, uh, the, the left and right turns coming out. So if it's just a few cars on the cycle, then, or each cycle, then it doesn't, it doesn't have a, a large effect overall in increasing the delay. There's some, there's absolutely some increase, but, but it's not, it's not substantial. And again, part of that is it's a high-capacity intersection, there's, there's separate turning lanes on the side streets, separate turning lanes on Commerce Way, so it's a, it's a high-capacity intersection, it can accommodate a lot of traffic.
What do you constitute as peak hours though? Because you just referenced ninety-second cycles and then forty cycles per day, right?
Per hour.
Per hour, I'm sorry. Uh, what are the, I guess, what are the peak hours? What, what are constituted as peak hours? Like when you say Saturday midday peak hours?
Yeah.
What are that, what is that time?
Yeah, so that's, that's probably twelve to one, and then, uh, weekday evening is probably five to six. 5 to 6.
All set? Counselor Tomlin? All set?
Yes.
Okay. Um, oh, sorry, President Dillon, you have the floor.
Joe, just, uh, for curiosity, by right, what else could go in there?
Lots of things.
Well, the office, medical, manufacturing, any 15,000 square feet, the usual.
Thank you.
Lots of things, and that's a great segue, um, the reason why a supermarket is a special permit, because it is the motherload of traffic, even though this is not Market Basket, supermarkets generate lots and lots of traffic. Um, Commerce Way, on a good day, you might be able to get to Chipotle by one from the bank in the afternoon. So, I just want everyone to remember what we're dealing with here, this is not just a mom and pop, you know, grab a sandwich and go. Um, my recommendation is that we leave this in committee, um, I'm gonna reach out to the city engineer and, um, talk with him, maybe we'll all arrange a meeting for all of us, um, but that's my recommendation. Do I have a motion to leave?
To leave it?
Or, do I have a motion to go back to the order?
Motion to go back to the regular order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, I'm not gonna say adjourn, but, um...
I'll make a motion to table the item and go to the next meeting.
Yeah, don't say adjourn. Thank you. But still. Okay, next on, next on the agenda.
We lose a motion, I'm sorry, motion to be tabled and go to the next meeting.
Next meeting will be in August. We can work on a date for a special committee meeting in August. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Commonwealth Investment Properties LLC for a special permit under WZO Section 5.1 and Section 7.3, do allow for the demolition and reconstruction of a new three-family dwelling, and the extension and alteration of a non-conforming structure at One Richmond Park. Is the petitioner here?
Joe Tavry is.
Oh, yeah. He got up, so I wasn't sure.
I think he's getting his stuff.
Get my stuff.
Sorry, it's so hot, everybody. I said, "Sorry, it's so hot."
No worries.
You have the floor, Attorney Harvey.
Okay. So, here is Nick Muscarino, Commonwealth Investment Properties LLC, who is the petitioner. I'd like to submit, um, that I can revise site plan with information that Jay Uren has reviewed, and I will say this, Jay, um, did send a plan to Jay this afternoon, but not heard back from him, um, but he does have a plan. In addition, we do have, um, revised elevation plans that we'll review as well, so.
I think motion to receive those and make cloud of affirmative record?
Second.
All in. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, um, the inclusion of the public hearing, there were open issues concerning parking, a tree along the crossing line, with the, um, a butter at 47 Warren Avenue, and then construction impacts on Three Richmond Place, Three Richmond Fox, that were brought up by, um, the, um, the body property. What I would like to point out is that, um, in the garages, um, at the public hearing, we showed that they had two spaces in the garage. In order to pull back the building from the rear, um, the parking garages, um, can only legally contain one parking spot, but the public didn't, correct?
Yes, it's not, by 18 times two.
So, three, three units, there'd be six parking spaces, each three in the garage and three free on the outside. So, just to refresh your memory, this is a request for a special permit to alter this non-conforming structure use from a three-unit residential, um, for rent dwelling unit, building, to three condos for sale, so we go from rental to, to sale. Um, again, the property doesn't meet the minimum lot size, the street frontage, front yard setback, backyard setback, re yard, and, um, open space. So, the construction of the new dwelling will provide the following improvements, one, it will increase the re yard setback from 7.4 feet to 13.7 feet, if you can see on the plan. The left side setback, um, at Three Richmond will increase from 2.4 feet to 10 feet, and then the landscape open space will increase from zero to 38.4%. In addition, um, there'll be one parking spot in each of the three garages, and three off-street parking, a total of six spaces. Now, we, we did do a, um, on-site visit with Counselor Campbell earlier this week, and there were a couple, a couple of other items that, um, the clients had agreed to. In connection with the property, um, to the right, that's on Warren Avenue, there was a large tree on the property, and the abbot had concerns about it hanging over the fence. The clients agreed that they'd go, take that tree down, and then plant a new tree in the northeast corner of the property. In addition, Counselor Campbell had, um, requested, um, some type of greenery in the front of the building, and were able to, um, what'd you say, like three planters?
Yeah, they planted between the door and the garage door in each unit, so I think the three planters.
Some sort of small arboretum, something to add some green.
And, um, I think those, those were the physical improvements. Now, Jay Uren and his, um, email to the city council indicated that, um, there'll be cuts in the street because of the gas and water service, so that curb to curb, we pay into a hundred feet curb to curb. Plants as 30 feet from each water and sewer cut, which, when you're told that up, is probably close to 100, but specifically, you told me 100 feet, and, you know, that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. Um, there's all sorts of other things, like, it'd probably be easier if I put those conditions and we can, we can run down this.
By the motion, took second as a working draft, still moved second in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because these, these conditions, um, try to address the concerns of the, of the parties.
Thank you, Counselor Tomlin.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so, the, um, the first condition is the typical condition, one, referencing the plant of record. Um, two, we propose the condition that says projects in the filing of a building permit application, petition will be the property owners of Three Richmond and 47 Warren to review proposed schedule for the work to be formed on premises. Try my allergies are really killing me today, so I'll do my best to get through this list. Number three talks about three residential units being the maximum, four, while lighting shielded so it doesn't, um, impact the body properties. Five, during construction, blow away sidewalks, we have to read clear about the re. Six, um, it's construction hours, 7:00 to 6:00 P.M., Monday to Friday, 8:00 into 5:00 on Saturdays, and no work on Sunday, or state of fickle holidays recognized by the city movement. Seven requires adequate pest control prior to commencement and maintained throughout all redevelopment and construction phases. Eight is removal of the tree, as I mentioned. Nine, um, is the planting of the tree in the northeast corner. Ten is, um, providing the three planters in front of the unit. And six, this petition is under Section 7.3, we would also need a finding.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes, um, so, I had met with Joe and the owners, um, and then also, yesterday? Not sure now. I met with, um, Colleen from Three Richmond, and then Joe from 47 Warren Ave, so there were butters right there, so they're going to experience the, the demolition and everything else that's taking place here. So, one big concern, and this is what I wanna talk to Joe, 'cause I did talk to him about it, there was an orange stake, and the owner, Colleen, who's at Three Richmond, was very concerned about it, 'cause there was an orange stake about three feet going into her yard, which obviously, it's a surveyor's stake, everybody knows what that looks like, and so I said to her, you know, "This needs to be resolved," she, and she said that she spoke with you, Nick, and that you said that you would just move over the fence, but then I also said to her, "Okay, well, that doesn't quite work that way, they're gonna go by that orange stake." So, Joe sent me an email today saying that the stake is gone.
Apparently.
But what does that mean? It was there as of Monday.
Yep, she, she, I think she took it, because we didn't touch it, and our surveyor didn't put any stakes down. I asked him, Ed Farrell, he didn't stake the property at all, he just built the plant. So, that stake was there well before, didn't do anything, she must've removed it, I'm assuming.
Okay, so I haven't spoken to her yet, so I do wanna speak to her just to find out what happened there, because obviously, that's what the fence people are gonna go by, that's what everybody's gonna go by, is that orange stake, um, or stakes, 'cause there wasn't one in the front area of the house.
My, my assumption, and I don't know this, is when Ed goes back out there and he definitely has the stake, when things are ripped up, whatever, so those new stakes will be conformed to this document.
Okay.
And go from there, so that's, I don't know where that stake was, but I'm assuming it's well in her, her lands.
The orange one was, it was a good three feet in.
Yeah, so it's...
On, in her backyard.
Okay.
So, I guess for me, the house is extremely close to Three Richmond, as a matter of fact, they almost share a driveway, they don't quite, but it's close, I mean, yeah...
Two and a half feet.
Yeah, it's, it's tiny, so I'm concerned about that, I'm not quite sure how to rectify that, because I just want to make sure that when we just, that if we approve this, that all of a sudden, she's not gonna lose half her driveway, uh, because that's where they end up approving the stake.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah.
So, when, um, he applies for the building, he's gonna have to get a foundation permit, that's gonna have to have a certified plan before, when, can issue a, a foundation permit, am I correct?
Correct.
On the last call?
Yep.
Okay, so, should we have a...
If I may?
Sorry, go ahead, um, one second, Joe.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor.
It would be, if the, if the ser, if the survey indicates that the property line is within the middle of her driveway, her driveway was illegally on this gentleman's property?
I don't know, she said she didn't know where, she said she didn't know where the stake came from.
The surveyor's, the surveyor's word will be the, will be the arbiter, not the council, that's what I'm saying.
No, right, no, I know that, and that's what concerns...
It would be unfortunate, but...
Well, and that's why I'm thinking to myself, I'm almost feeling like that has to be resolved before we actually approve this, which I don't wanna hold you up, um, but that's huge, because if you then say, "Okay, no, we'll give her the three feet," then that has to be resolved.
I think that's a, yeah, separate matter. An issue between property and, I just pulled out my email from Ed Farrell, the engineer, and he said, um, we asked him to check the stake, and he said that, "I will check on it, I did not stake anything," so stamp is on this plan, and he, he didn't put any stake on this property, so, could've been there from before, could be from maybe someone surveying other property, but...
Yeah, well, it was there, it was there as of Monday, uh...
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we wouldn't be asking for certi, certified survey plan with these plans.
No, I think we might have to now, now that that happened.
Anybody that wants to build something in the city goes to the building department, and the building department's gonna say, "Okay, make sure you provide a certified survey, plot plan," so I'm not sure why we're not, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, but we can discuss, that, I mean, I do think that we have to discuss among us, you know, more about that.
So, the plan that's submitted with this petition, it's the certification of Ed Farrell, that this plan is based on an actual instrument survey, so what you see on this plan, there's the, the property, you know, if someone puts an orange stake over here, that doesn't, that doesn't impact this plan, it's got a certification, and beyond that, when he applies for the foundation permit, he's gotta do another plan that certifies, that shows the foundation on the site, as well as the boundary lines that it's set back, this thing gets approved, that it's set back 10 feet on the property line, and that's, and then we've agreed to have a meeting before we start any work, or file for a building permit application, have a meeting with both parties.
No, I know, but if we approve the, the, this, this three dwellings here, um, there's a chance that it might actually not fit, or if there's some discrepancy on the survey.
I do agree with that.
And I actually didn't see, I didn't see any, I looked to see if there were any stakes, say, on your property, I didn't see any, I didn't see any tubes, I didn't see anything like that, but, um, I guess maybe this is now why we should talk about it now. Any suggestions on, uh, Counselor Toro, you do a lot of construction?
I think you have to open that up.
Yeah, will you open it up?
Second.
Because I have other, other questions too.
All in favor?
I, I think, this is just my opinion, but if we were to approve, let's just say hypothetically, we're approving this permit, we're approving it based on the, the proposed conditions, if the certified plotting comes back and they don't meet this, these conditions...
They would have to put the site plan, and the site plan of record would be incorrect.
And then it would make the special permit...
Not invoked.
Not invoked, so, the certified plot plan is Ed Farrell, who does a fantastic job, then is reviewed by Tom Quinn for accuracy, and that is way, way outside of our jurisdiction, we, we should not be discussing this at all, 'cause all we're going based off of is the professionals' information, and if two property owners have a dispute with a, a stake, let them dispute it personally, that's not up to us. This is what we're approving here, and if they go to stake it professionally, when he goes to do the foundation plan and it's wrong, Attorney Harvey's gonna come back to us...
For modification.
For modification, and then we go from...
No, I mean, that might be true, but I also feel like...
No, it's 100% true, though.
Well, no, that's true, that's what I said, that might be true, but I also feel that I, as an alderman, need to think about the resident that lives right next door, that practically is sharing a driveway, I mean, you, you couldn't have, you might be able to have two cars side by side, and the doors open at the same time, but open halfway, so, there, it's tight, it's very tight there.
But without due respect, it's not your jurisdiction or ours to, i- if, if her, if, if his property, if she's using his property, that's something you can, we cannot, you're opening us to a, a, to, to a lot of issues, let them deal with that, that's not on us, let, let them, I, I understand, you know, he's also a resident as well, you know, you wanna advocate for both, but if there's a property dispute, we gotta stay out of it, we can't get in, we can't get involved in this, that's not our jurisdiction, that's not what, that's not what this body is here for, this is what we're here for. So, if she's saying there's an issue with the stake in this, let the professionals handle it, and that's it.
But that will reflect on whether this property works in this spot, because it's non-conforming, or it's not working in this spot, in my view, as the alderman, that's my view.
It sounds, it sounds like...
President Dillon.
Thank you. Sounds like there's already a cooperation between the developer and the neighbor, get this resolved even before our next committee meeting, probably as soon as next week this could get resolved, if he's already done the, the groundwork and the, the work on staking out the lot, as it appears he has, so I think we just...
Yeah.
Wait a week, we're not gonna make a decision today anyways, correct?
Yeah, no, so...
You feel comfortable, but I certainly, I tend to agree with Counselor Toro that if this... this is a property line dispute, we're not involved in that. But, and it's, it sounds like almost a phantom stake, and stakes are used by surveyors, they're also called offsets. This could have been used for four lots down the street, but this isn't the only point he found.
Absolutely.
So, you don't know what that stake was. I don't know that to be the case, but many times, they could be four houses away, and that's the closest monument that he could find and call it the.
Right, but this is before us, and we're, and we're going to make a finding saying that it's less detrimental to the area. So, if she loses half her driveway, whether it's a private dispute or not, I would say it's more detrimental to the neighborhood.
But if it's his property?
It's not. It's going to be her property disappearing, if that's the case.
But it's legally his property.
If it's re-surveyed, it would be legally his property that she was illegally using.
No, I know. They need to resolve it.
They, yes.
And beforehand, and we have a property that's been burnt out, and you have done a pretty good job, but it's still a mess back there with glass and everything. So, I don't want to hear that, you know.
I understand on that.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with the stake, though.
Right, but still, so, for me.
So, the new structure gets moved ten feet from the property line.
Right, so, but I'm saying that I would like it resolved before we vote on it, I want to make sure that we know where the lines are, and that it's not going, or if, or you work it out with the homeowner, which you've done a great job, she's, she said that you have been working really well with, with her. So, that's great.
See, I understand and appreciate what you're saying, but we have a certified plan. And, you know, if I represent the abbot who wants to propose a project, now, all I got to do is tell him to throw a stake on this side of the property line, and then.
Then we're off to the next thing.
Yeah?
Yes, Councilor.
Yeah, that's why, that's why the requirements say you have to have a certified plan.
No, I understand. So, I'm still talking, actually, unless this is on this, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just taking a lineup. You have the floor?
Okay, thank you. All right. So, that was the one, one thing that is, is big for me. Also, she was concerned that, that you were not, Nick has agreed to put a fence going about halfway to three quarters down, correct? You and Colleen on this side?
What we talked about is her with, her backyard.
Yeah, so going from like here to about here?
Yes, that's maybe a quarter.
Yeah, okay, so about a quarter down.
To give privacy between her backyard and their, the new backyard.
Correct, yeah, so that should be put in.
Sure.
But then, her concern also was possibly putting down some sort of granite paver, even if it's in the ground, so that you know the differentiated, differentiation between both properties. Otherwise, you don't know, because the driveway will just be paved. If the fence went all the way down, that was one thing, but then you can't open the doors to the cars. But if you put a paver of some sort, you can still open up the doors, if that's.
Not to interrupt, but there's a good example of that on Washington Street, as you get, when you're traveling up Washington Street, past Leaven Park, that work like that was recently done.
Okay.
A home, right before you get to the Winchester lawn. Perfect example of what you just talked.
Oh, all right, good, thank you. Okay, so, if that's, yeah, so if that's something that you're good with, let me see. So, that's good. One of the biggest issues, okay, you have snow removal on here, which is great, the demolition, because the house is so close to the other property, she has a four-month-old baby, and that's why we have this condition here about you meeting to schedule and review the proposed schedule of the demolition. What happens when you demolish a building like that, so, because so close to another building when it comes to lead and asbestos and all of that? She has a lot of concerns about that?
Yeah.
She's going to, she's going to be, move out during the demolition? She doesn't want to be there with her baby?
Okay.
So, how does the lead and the asbestos and all of that, how do we make sure that that doesn't get on to the next building that's so close?
Okay. So, we've already had, we have de-lead certificates in all units.
Okay.
Right, so there was no lead in the house.
Really? In that building?
That building, yeah. I can give you de-lead certificates.
Okay.
Professional person, because when we have renters in there, renters with kids under six, I think it is, they require de-lead certificate.
Okay.
Right, so we have that.
Great.
That hasn't changed. Asbestos, same thing.
Okay.
When we renovated that house to get rentable, that was one of the first things we did ten years ago, I don't know how long we've owned this property.
Okay, okay.
And all of that stuff is.
Okay. And do they do water demolitions?
Absolutely.
Okay, to keep all the.
They're standard.
All right, okay.
Hire a company that does all that.
Okay, so she'll feel, yeah, so she'll feel good about that. Let me see, the debris, she was wondering how long do you think the, it will take to build this new building?
That's a good question. Weather is going to play a factor, right, as we approach.
Yeah.
And let's joke, the sooner we get this done, the sooner we can get out there.
Well, right, no, I know, I know.
I wish I could give you a timeline, but all depends on permitting, that usually takes the longest time. Knocking it down takes.
No, I know. Approximation?
Oh, six, I'd say nine, twelve months, I feel.
All right.
That's just, that's a good rough estimate.
Okay. Let me see. Saturdays, you have down that you want to, to work on Saturday, eight to five?
Yeah, we're just going to follow the, the city rules.
Can you go eight to three, just because the buildings are so close there?
Keep in mind, John, and that will take, make it take longer.
I know. Is eight to five, you think is fine, even when you have some, okay?
Do a full day's work.
Yeah, okay. On the tree, obviously, I want to make sure that we put down a small tree, example ornamental pear. Of some, it doesn't have to be an ornamental pear, but Forty-Seven Montville does not want a big tree, of course, because that's been.
Forty-Seven Warren.
Warren, excuse me. That's been the big issue with the tree.
That tree is a hundred feet, as it is now, at least.
Yeah, yeah.
That coming, because it overhangs his land, although he's fallen his yard, that's why he's upset, but we'll take that down, that's easy. Putting something up, you promised you would send something.
Yes.
A suggestion of what was.
Yeah, yeah, like an ornamental pear of some sort. Let me see. I think that's about it. Let me just think here quickly.
Are you think, can I open it up?
Absolutely, absolutely. Please, thank you, Chairman.
It doesn't matter if this is a dispute, it's a land court dispute, not a city council dispute, and I'll save everything else forever.
President Dillon, I think, was next, and then Counselor DeMambrano.
I agree with Counselor Pavulo. Just one, perhaps, correction on the, the lead. More than likely, you are lead compliant, doesn't mean that there's not lead in the house, don't demolition regulations, it is required for asbestos, but not for lead. So, and then they use water, which is typical application during demolition.
Mm-hmm.
There is nothing that I'm aware of in demolition that requires someone to remove lead from a house.
Okay.
More than likely, the pheasant structure is lead compliant, which means somebody went in and that, that had met the state statue and federal statues, has vows, children under seven or six living there. So, there's still maybe lead in there. I guess not typically anything that is done on a regular basis on demolition is required for lead.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
All set, President?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DeMambrano.
This isn't really my question, but typically with the demolition, there's always water applied.
Yes.
As they're tearing it down, water is sprayed concurrently with the excavation, demolition with an excavator. So, everything gets dampened, and then they just load it in the truck, and the truck also gets dampened, so it keeps all the dust down. But they also don't use too much water, so it doesn't flow out into the street or into a neighboring thing. But that's, that's the dust control typically on a demo. My question, Attorney Tobby, Attorney Tobby, I looked at an old rendering of the garages, and it seems to be that the structure's thirty-two feet deep. And in one picture that you provided, a schematic, you have two cars basically going bumper-to-bumper. And then on the latest one you just gave us, you have one. So, my question is, did you change the configuration of your garage, or you're going full depth of thirty-two feet, or did you cut the depth of that garage to sixteen to twenty feet on the depth?
So, originally, that was that, the depth of the house was longer and would fit to nine by eighteen spots. We then decreased the back to get more room in the back, therefore brought it below thirty-six, nine by eighteen. So, that updated dark drawing is showing the one-car garage and the one-car outside non-garage.
What's going to fill that space behind, or in front of the vehicle?
Space between, I call it engine room, right, so all of the utilities.
So, that's going to be a mechanical room?
Yeah.
Excellent, all right, that was my question.
Excellent, some storage back there, too.
Excellent.
Anybody else? All set, Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, I guess, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, you have the floor, then Attorney Tobby.
Yes, I guess what is our, you know, obviously, this is before us to say whether, you know, this type of structure will not be substantially more detrimental. That's definitely will clean up the area, there's, there's no question. Fencing in the back, all new? Oh, that's what I was going to ask. The building behind, it's singed. Have you resolved that with the people behind?
My understanding is, my understanding is they reached out to, I'm going to say their insurance company, I don't think our insurance company, and their claim was denied for some reason, which I don't know, and the insurance company wouldn't give me that information.
Okay, okay.
So, I don't really have an answer for you, because I don't have any more information beyond that.
Yeah.
There would be a fence that would go all the way across, a new fence that would go across.
Okay, and so the owners, they haven't contacted you?
Not at all.
About the same, okay, that's been about a year and a half, right, over a year?
Yeah.
Okay, so that fence will be replaced all the way?
All the way.
Okay, so I guess my question is, how can we resolve this issue about making, about the property line?
Yeah.
So that I can feel comfortable with this.
Yeah, so I'd like to, I'd like to make a request that the matter be set up for action, and then we work these things out. I guess I'm going to have to ask Nick to go meet with her tomorrow and.
Yeah, I'd like to be there, too, if you can just let me know what time. I'm only here tomorrow and Friday, I'm away, but then I'll be back for the meeting Tuesday night, Thursday and Friday.
Counselor Campbell, I'm just going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to jump in.
Yeah, please, please.
So, there is a certified plot plan. It's, it's not just a plot plan, it's certified, it's stamped, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm really not comfortable talking about the, the lot lines, they're there, as far as we know them. I would suggest, however, that the owner of the property that you're concerned with, who had the stake, that she, if she's concerned, she should survey her own property. There is a survey plan right there for all of us to see. If it wasn't stamped, I would have the same concerns that you have. If it wasn't certified, I'd have those same concerns. I, I don't share them, and I just, I don't want to cause undue harm here, and I know you don't either.
No, I don't.
So, that, that would be my suggestion, take it or leave it.
Yeah, I did suggest that to her, but that was before we found out the stake was gone. I mean, I had said to her, you know, so maybe, I don't want to know, I don't know what happened, but I will talk to her tomorrow, and I would gladly meet with you guys. So, back for action, I, I'm comfortable with, and then we can tweak the conditions, if that's fine with you on a few things.
Is that in the form of a motion, Counselor Campbell?
Please.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Call the duty on public safety license.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Counselor Pavulo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor DeMambrano, and I'm the chairman, Counselor. Make a motion, expensive reading.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. For the night, this one matter, renewal of a second-hand dealer's license for Teresa's closet, one sixty-four Main Street. All paperwork's in order, there are no physical complaints. A very low impact, low traffic matter.
I'll make a motion that the petition for a renewal is sent out on the pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.